Please repeat after me. I.
I.
Your full name.
Eric Garcia.
Having been elected to the office of councillor District 1.
Having to be elected as a councillor District 1.
Of the city of Grants.
Of the city of Grants.
Of Cibola County.
Of Cibola County.
State of New Mexico.
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the state of New Mexico.
The laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the laws and chapter.
And the laws and chapter.
Of the city of Grants.
Of the city of Grants.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You'll need this sign right here. There. Either one. I had started, but you'll. That'll be your copy to remember forever, man. This will be the copy that's official, okay?
Yes, sir.
Phil, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, your full name.
I, Fred Irodatte.
Having been elected to this office of councillor District 3.
Having been elected to the office of district, uh, of district councillor, District 3.
Of the city of Grants.
Of the city of Grants.
Of Cibola County.
Of Cibola County.
State of New Mexico.
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of New Mexico.
Of the state of New Mexico.
And the laws.
And the laws.
And the chapter.
And the chapter.
Of the city of Grants.
Of the city of Grants.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna sign them both.
Rick, are you growing a beard? Okay, you're gonna have to turn it up where I can hear Rick, guys.
We will.
And Fred. Donald, you need to shave your head, you're getting some hair up there.
That one will be yours. I'll give these both to Laura. That one's yours. These are both original.
Okay, we're ready to call this meeting to order, but before we do, I want to inform the public that two of the councillors you see are not here. They are on a livestream with us, they will be voting livestream. Um, we're doing the social distance stuff to avoid this COVID-19. So before we start the meetings, does someone that would like to offer a prayer? Fred?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you, Father God, for today. Thank you for this new start for us in the city. We pray, Father God, that you give us wisdom, that you give the city wisdom, how to implement and how to spend the city money and the people's money, Father God, so that we may do good for our community. We also pray, Father God, that you bless our community, that you, uh, open the eyes of the citizens, Father God, that they may practice good safe procedures and not only the people, but the businesses, Father God. And we thank you, Father God, for this evening, and we thank you for a good start. Amen.
Amen. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Councillor Irodatte.
Present.
Councillor Garcia.
Present.
Councillor Lucero.
Hello.
Councillor Padilla.
Hello.
Cool, everybody's here. Um, will you please stand and join in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah!
Amen.
Uh, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Fred, will you make some motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Irodatte with a second. Citizens, to address the council, obviously there's no one here and we didn't receive any questions online. We can go on to the hearing items. The first one is public comment and discretion of our charter. I am very, very happy to say that we are in compliance with our charter after many years of not being in compliance. Approval of the regular city council meeting minutes. That would be Rick and Fred and myself, since you two weren't even on the board last week. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes.
Yeah, I second.
Okay, Rick made the motion. Fred, you second?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Fred, you second? All in favor, say aye, since there's only three of us aye.
Aye. Aye.
There we go. Okay. The next one is the mayor pro temp appointment. Um, I spoke to Rick Lucero about this and I would like to have the council's improvement to appoint Rick Lucero as the mayor pro temp. Could I get a motion?
I make a motion that Rick Lucero becomes mayor pro temp.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the board appointments. Um, we'll just go through these real quick. Okay, the first one is the council of governments. Um, I'm gonna appoint Eric to the council of governments. I will take a seat on the council of governments and Laura will be the alternate. Is everybody good with that? Let me get a motion on it.
Yes. Will I make a motion that, uh?
Well, yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Okay, I make a motion that myself will join Mr. Mayor Hicks in the council of governments.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
The next one is economic development board. Fred, Padilla, and Laura Jaramillo and myself. Anybody got a problem with those? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendations for Fred Padilla and the mayor and Laura.
Laura is the alternate.
For the econ, uh, for the economic development board.
Second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
The next one is the transit board. Requires one. Fred Irodatte, Councillor Irodatte will take that one with Laura as the alternate. Could I get a motion?
I make a motion that councillor, uh, Fred Irodatte joins the transit board for the 2020.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
The next one is the future foundations family board. That one will be Rick Lucero, Councillor Lucero and Laura as the alternate. Could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation of Rick Lucero and Laura as the alternate for the future foundations board.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
And the last one is the solid waste authority board. I've been sitting on this board for 14 years. I think I will continue to sit on this board, okay? Uh, Laura will be my alternate and Eric, I want you to come to a couple of these meetings.
I'd like to as well, if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine. We'll alternate them. That way we don't have a quorum at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that way you guys can both see what we're doing as far as recycling goes and what's going on because, I mean, we never know what's gonna happen with that recycling one day or the next. The market dies, it dies, okay? Um, so I'll entertain a motion for the solid waste authority board?
I make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation of, uh, Mayor Hicks, right?
Yes.
And Laura council is the alternate.
Yes.
Uh, to the solid waste authority board.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
Cool, thank you guys very much. The next one, declaration of the city of Grants for an emergency area as a result of the COVID-19. Um, this one here, guys, we're doing it at the recommendation of the county and the state because they say that it will be easier for us to get money from the federal government if there is gonna be any money that comes down the pipe later on. So that's what this is about.
So that means we'll have something in place?
Yes, exactly. The resolution puts us in for any money that they're gonna do. But the main reason we're doing is because they said it would be faster if we did it ourselves instead of going under the umbrella of the county and the state. Okay? Any questions?
So, you're saying the umbrella, it's better, this is what the, the state is proposing?
Yeah, the state and the county told us to put this in ourselves because it will help in, in the case there is any money. Okay, it won't take so long to get it. And who knows if there's gonna be any, okay? We don't know that yet. We'll have to wait.
But it will benefit.
Yes. Okay. Any questions out there, guys? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 20-1671 for emergency area as a result of the COVID-19. Going once.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution 20-1671 uh, for the declaration of the city of Grants to be an emergency area as a result of COVID-19.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
Great. Application for appointment to the senior center. I'm recommending Timothy Hobrin to go ahead and join our senior citizen advisory council. And I'll entertain a motion to approve him as such.
Is he being real active in that?
Uh, he has since he came back to town. Saying that, who was that? Great, second.
I'll second it.
Fred, Councillor Padilla.
Yes.
Councillor Lucero.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Irodatte.
Yes.
In case people are wondering why I'm always looking up, I'm looking at the screen of other councillors out there that are on TV here in the room with me, okay? Moving on. Light station pump. Mayor, council, uh, councillors online, Mrs. Manager. Uh, this is a, a Flight Pump. That's the brand name of one of three pumps that are located at 66 Lift Station. All of the sewer from Milan and Grants flows into one lift station and from that point it's pumped three miles uphill to the waste treatment plant. The two 110 horsepower pumps are perfectly fine and they keep up, uh, with the high flows, but there's a backup pump that's a 250 horsepower pump. Uh, that pump went down and to repair it, it costs $63,562.73. Uh, to purchase a new one, engineers, uh, from Flight, they said it'd be about $115,000 by itself. That was the last estimate we received. Questions from the council to Mr. Tejima. Go ahead, Fred.
Um, question, um, if we, if we purchased a new one, what kind of guarantee does it, what kind of warranty does it come with it?
I'd have to check on that, um.
And this one, by rebuilding it, what kind of guarantee does it, does the city get on this one?
You know, I, I wish I was prepared for that, but, uh, generally these pumps last about three years and the sewer, it's really hard on pumps. And so generally what I see is one-year warranties, but I, I can check on that and get you an answer.
I'd like to know because, uh, I know that these, these pumps are very expensive to, to get and they, and they have to come from out of the country, am I correct?
You're correct, from Sweden and their three-month turnaround times. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay. And, and if we, if we approve this particular portion to rebuild it, how long, uh, how, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for the rebuilding process?
So it would be three months from today to rebuild this pump. If we were to purchase the pump, they would, they would have to build it and then it'd be about three-month turnaround time. So probably close between three and four months if we were to purchase a new one. I could call, I could step out and call the engineer, she's on standby.
Step to the mayor, he must be waiting on that one.
This is an emergency. Yes, sir, that's why the engineer's on standby. Did they pay for pumps since I came on this council when you were sitting there?
Me too, yeah.
And it's just an ongoing, you know why? Because we're pumping our crap uphill. It's the most ignorant thing I've ever seen. Why did we ever do that? Whoever approved that should have been taken out and put against the wall.
That would be poor art time here.
Gee, man, he's mad. Um, you know, guys, we can't wait. Step out and call them, see what kind of guarantees we're gonna get. I'm gonna have Mark call the engineer real quick to see what kind of, um, warranty we're gonna get on these two different pumps. So everybody just take a chill pill for a minute and we'll see what we get.
And what it looks like and what he just said was, uh, whether we rebuild this one or buy a new one.
Still gonna be three or four months.
Yeah, still gonna be, yeah, the same amount of time.
The thing is, is the money.
Cause they gotta come from Sweden.
Yeah, the money amount is the thing, guys.
Yeah, that's the big difference.
Okay, because our budget is taking a hit.
They got a considerable, when, when we were, before.
Well, they were 40 grand, they were almost 40, 44 grand. Mayor has a question. Uh, what kind of guarantees do we get with the rebuild pump versus what kind of guarantees do we get with a brand new pump? Hang on, let me push on speaker. Go ahead.
One year on the rebuild pump, uh, for, for warranty issues and five years on it.
Five years. Five years on a new one and one year on the rebuild and the price is almost double.
That's correct.
Well, that's a no-brainer, guys.
What do the other councillors think?
I mean, for me, if we, if we have the $115,000, we're gonna get a five-year guarantee.
Versus one year.
I mean, versus a one year, I don't know, guys. Comments?
How often are these pumps going out?
About once a year. Um, from, from what I've seen, between the three pumps, the mayor's right. Uh, it kind of alternates one small pump, one small pump and then one big pump and then it starts over, one small.
And that's like on a yearly basis, is that what you're saying?
You bet you it is, buddy. Last year was the first year we skipped. Go ahead, Laura.
Actually, it seems like every three years, one of the pumps goes out.
I know, from my experience over the last 14 years, especially when I first came on the council, we were buying pumps every three months. Or so it seemed. And it seems like we just bought a pump three months ago. Am I correct on that, Mark? Uh, no, sir, not for 66. Probably what you're thinking of is either the, the pump station on this street or, uh, we rebuilt Holiday and Walmart lift stations and we needed, we needed pumps for those. Do we have the money for the new one? No, Laura shaking her head no. That answers your question, guys.
Well, let me ask you another question, Mark, real quick. Uh, let's say we, let, just for the sake of discussion, that we bought a new pump and something happened to it, it's got a warranty for five years. Uh, you know, do, do they have to come from Sweden to fix it or if it's under warranty or?
We take it out, we send it back to them.
We send it to them, is that the way it works?
That's the way it works. Kendra can better answer that question. Go ahead, Kendra.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't complete.
Okay.
I hear the question.
Let me, let me, uh, say the question again. So if something goes out, we buy the five-year warranty, a brand new pump. Something goes out, how do we get that fixed?
We would repair it in our shop in Albuquerque, but I would like to clarify that the five-year warranty is prorated. So as you proceed through the warranty period, it does, uh,
It's going down.
Become a smaller amount of, of the total repaired than it was. And it's also only for warranty repairs. So if anything happens that's unusual or not appropriate for the lift station, there's potential that you could have a repair that, that wouldn't fall inside of warranty conditions.
They don't have the money for the new pump anyway, they, they, they rebuild one and let's move forward, guys.
What do you guys say?
I'll entertain a motion for the used pump, guys. Good night.
Sure, cover that for me, thank you.
Alright, good night. It's an emergency buy, guys, we gotta have it. We don't have the money for a brand new one. I'll entertain a motion for the used pump. Going once. Going twice.
Hold on, Mayor, hold on to that. So just, just to be clear, just to be clear, you're, how long has this been out, Mark?
So we discovered it March, uh, 4th.
Okay, March 4th.
Yes, sir.
And if these other 110 pumps go out, what's the, what's the backlash?
Back to, yeah, crap, yeah, crap flows downhill, not uphill. It, it'll go into the Rio San Jose like it did last time. Then we will get fined and, oh, it's not a good thing when the, the environment department shows up.
Yeah, so when it deals with sewer stuff, uh, you know, obviously we don't have the money. We're, right now, we're, I make a motion that we, uh, go with the rebuild pump and try to get that done as soon as possible because of.
$63,562.73.
For $63,562.3.73, the reason is, uh, we need it.
Second.
Well, I'll go ahead and second it. I, uh, I know that we need it, I know that, I've seen that before and that's a very important, very important thing to have for the city, so.
It's nasty, guys. I got a motion in a second, Councillor Padilla. It's, uh, I've got a motion in a second. I'm calling for the vote now, Fred. Yes or no on the, on the used pump?
Yes.
Councillor Lucero?
Yeah, I made the motion for yes.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Fred?
Yes.
Passes 4-0. Next. Item number eight, Roosevelt Bridge preliminary engineering report. I still don't see, I don't see audio up there yet.
Hey, uh, Mayor? Can, can you guys hear me? You guys hear me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
That's done.
Alright, I just wanted to give a brief comment prior to, uh, audio and Donny coming on. I'm, uh, recommending an approval for all four items and I just want to give reason as to why for each one. Number eight, Roosevelt Avenue Bridge, the impact to the city is very minimal because due to the contribution from the flood district of 50,000. So the impact to the city would only be a little over a thousand.
Okay, here's, here's, here's my concern with this, Donald. We did an engineering, we, deal, Fred was on the council back then for the other end of Walter Street up there where it was supposed to start at. We did all the engineering work. The engine work's done. There ain't no road band done and it's been 12 years.
12 years.
But we already paid for the engineering report. So my point being is, we go ahead and we pay for this and the governor doesn't give us the money because she already vetoed everything this year, right? So next year she's gonna be in a worse locker than she is this year. I mean, I don't know, that's, that's just my feelings, guys.
That's my question, exactly.
It's gonna be a thousand dollars out of our pocket, so it's not really a killer and we all know that eventually Roosevelt's gonna get done because that bridge has to be done. I just, I'm, I'm speaking from experience with what happened over here at the last time that we went ahead and paid for engineering in advance and then the project never happens.
Well, if you remember the bridge on Nimitz that we did, well, not only did we have the engineering money, but we also had the money to build the bridge. And so, you know, it all, it all went hand in hand and we broke ground. This one, we don't have the money to build it, right?
We got the money for nothing. But it's only gonna cost us a thousand and the engineering report will be done in another two, three years.
And how, how long is that good for?
That's a question, Donald, how long is the engineering report good for?
That's, uh, Michael, can you answer that? I was thinking five years, but I'm sure Michael can answer that. Well, uh, Mayor, Mayor and council are bringing up a lot of good questions, Doug. I, I would, I would suggest, go ahead and finish with your comments and we'll dive into the presentation because many of those comments can be answered with the presentation.
No, 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 wait, hang on. Hang on, that was a very simple question. Answer that question. Hang on, we're not, answer that question.
The, uh, the 50,000, uh, the report is good for five years. Also, the council should be aware that we got notification for District 6 that we are getting partial funding this year. So we're, we're utilizing this ease to secure the topographic survey, the geotechnical, the, uh, what we call the bridge selection report. The DOT requires that.
Partial funding is what, Mario?
Which bridge structure we're gonna do.
Partial funding is what, Mario?
Just the analysis. In the next piece.
Mario, Mario, stop, stop, stop.
The agreement's coming, the DOT on the map.
Somebody needs to stop him. Somebody needs to stop him.
And build the grade control first, not the bridge.
Stop!
You have to build the grade control.
Son of a gun, man.
The bridge wants to go down. So remember that last meeting, council.
Stop!
We recommended in council, we not to spend the 200,000.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor. Mario, you just went on a whole big bling without listening to a word that we're saying here in the council, okay? Don't do that. How much is the money that District 6 is giving us to go with this project? You said we got partial funding. How much?
You'll be 900, uh, let me see the exact number. The 900,000, 60,000 that's committed from the DOT for map state one.
And the governor has not vetoed that yet?
No.
Are you sure, Mario?
Yes, sir, I can bring you the email from District 6, sir.
Please do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if we've got that 900,000, then let's go ahead and do the engineering report. Because then we can move forward. 900,000, right, Mario? So that means we do the engineering report, we got $900,000 to build the bridge, right?
I'm sorry, Mayor, say it again.
What I'm saying is, if we go ahead and do the preliminary engineering, then we have $900,000 to do the bridge. See, I'm, I'm, for some, for some reason, I'm not buying that because she vetoed the Washington Bridge already. She took that away from us. What was it, 1.2 million? Now you're telling me District 6 is gonna give us 900,000 dollars? Where are they gonna get 900,000 dollars from when the governor, I mean, come on, man. Explain it to me.
Is it different because it's a DOT?
The, the governor vetoed 100,000 that we have for Washington Bridge. We had 1.5 million for Washington Bridge.
And she didn't veto that?
We'll have to get it here next month and make.
She did veto that money for the Washington Bridge, right?
I don't wanna say something.
No, no, sir, it was 100,000 for Holiday in 2020 and, and it was only for streets and drainage improvement.
Go ahead, Laura. Go ahead, Laura.
So, uh, recommendation might that we prove this, hinting the, the first central.
There you go.
And then we'll know what's happening, what's being vetoed further. Uh, um, it's, that's just probably two months away. We can wait to start this preliminary engineering report till that time.
I'm good with that.
I agree with Eric.
I'm, I'm good with that. Any questions there, Fred, Rick?
No.
Rick, you got anything? Turn your mic off, buddy, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I don't, uh.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we should go ahead with this preliminary engineering report.
Go ahead, make the motion.
Yeah, I make the motion to approve the Roosevelt Avenue Bridge replacement preliminary engineering report for $50,000.
Second. Going once. Going twice.
I'll make a second.
Second by Councilor Garcia. Councilor Palio.
No, we should take it.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor O'Dartay?
No.
And I'll vote yes.
You're gonna put it in?
Yeah. If they, if we got $900,000 for it, guys, we need to go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
But you know what? Um, the motion, Rick, is to wait and see if the governor vetoes it, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, so there's your motion. The motion is to approve the preliminary report pending what the governor does in May or June, whenever she's gonna finish her final hacks on this.
So it's not a motion to, to approve the preliminary report?
It is pending.
Pending.
Because that way, if, if the governor vetoes and then takes everything and slams us all down...
Then it don't go through.
Then it doesn't go through.
Well, if it doesn't go through, if it, if it doesn't get...
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, uh, Mario indicated that the 9th, yeah, the email indicated that the 9th, uh, 9th 16. It was, uh, is there from District Six.
Yeah, but the governor has the power to take that away, okay? Make no doubt about it.
Right.
And with what, what's happened here with this COVID-19 and her trying to kill the oil and gas industry in this state, she's gonna have no money. So she gonna have to come up with that money from somewhere. I guarantee you, there is no money, guys. Okay? So that's the motion and it passed. Let's move on to the next one. First Street Pond and Stormwater Station Engineering Design.
Mario, I think, I think you go ahead and do it and Laura, if you could do the presentation.
Okay, Mayor. So, uh, uh, real briefly, Don and manager, I sent you the DOT email, so you guys have it and, and Fred, it's your pleasure from the council on the, on the first item. On the second item, First Street Stormwater Pump Station, the engineering task order before you is $222,000. First of all, can you guys see the pump? Let me ask that.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, go to the next slide. Uh, next. Okay, so in the slide here, let's just go through the bullets. It's $100,000 that's been funded through the Rio San Jose. Uh, the way it works is once a month, the, the dirt portion is expended, we submit receipts, i.e., uh, the city submits copies of the, uh, uh, checks and they will reimburse the $100,000. Uh, you can see, second bullet item shows 1.6 million NMDOT in red stricken out and then it's followed by Water Trust Board, Caporalty Cooperative Agreement, Control Number Charlie, 6193317, red stricken out with WPF 1695. So, uh, the, the idea I hear is to utilize the $100,000 from the Rio San Jose. That, that was the request that was made for the Torres', uh, Pond and Pump Station. And we, about three weeks ago, uh, Don and I were at, at the RTPO meeting and the DOT delivered the 1.6 million in cooperative agreement, uh, for the, uh, First Street, Phase Two, which will essentially finish from, uh, Adams to, to Washington, excuse me, from Washington to Roosevelt. That particular agreement, just want to point out that it, it has a, um, six-month requirement of the agreement where a 5% expenditure must be made. Um, that agreement was there in October and Don just received it three weeks ago. Correct, Tom?
So what does that mean?
So we, we, we have to shorten expenditure of $80,000, 5% of that. And so recommendation would be to utilize it, the 1.6, go ahead and do the proper paperwork and utilize that to pay the additional $122,000 to finish the drainage out of, um, uh, now and, uh, and then tomorrow, tomorrow, we have a call in the morning for the last 1.8 million. Mayor, there's some confusion and Justin Reese, Deputy Director, wanted to clear up with District Six, so tomorrow we are discussing that last 1.8 billion, so, uh, who will vote all the funds available this month. Don is looking to put that out to bid in May and start construction, uh, this year for First Street. This item supports tonight, only for design, so again, the time for the pond, the pump station, $100,000, Rio San Jose, recommending the balance of 1, of $122,573, the 8th pump.
Questions? Fred, you got any questions?
The first thought was, uh, the first thought was, uh, now it's the last.
Yes, sir, the first thought provided $100,000. The, the balance of $122,573.38, we would recommend that it be, um, taken from the 1.6, uh, map, I mean, because we, we do have to the end of this month to spend 5% per the agreement and nothing has been spent.
That answer your question?
Thank you, Mario.
Rick?
You're very welcome, sir.
Rick, you got any questions?
Yeah, so we're gonna spend 5% by the end of April on this project?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Are we able to do that?
Um, it's gonna be hard for us to do the 80,000. Uh, 80,000 frankly for engineering is, is, is hard to do. Uh, we're, we're, I, I don't think we're going to the 80,000, but we'll keep the DOT abreast, so the project may see progress and the project is in the city. But what the legislature is looking at first and foremost is any money that hasn't moved out, any expenditures that haven't been made. So the last of the expenditures, we probably won't have the, we just can't put enough effort on that due to burn at that point.
Sure, sure.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Rick Lucero, I spoke to the DOT and they said primarily what they're looking for is activity, so not necessarily the whole 5%, I'm sure if we're at 3%, 4%, I'm sure they're fine with that. They wanna see activity.
Right, I mean, okay, that, that answers my question. As long as we're moving, uh, on that project and making progress, we're probably okay.
Mark, you got something?
Yes, Mario, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I see the NMDOT is scratched out and its Water Trust Board, is that match funding? And if so, what percentage?
Yes, good question and, uh, it's important for, for everyone to know that there is also Water Trust Board recommendation of 1.6 million, so the numbers are the same, but the, the Water Trust Board will be used for construction. Or construction. That's why I left both numbers in there. So the NMDOT, Control Number Charlie, 6193317, is where we would take the $128,573.38 to pay for the engineering. And the Water Trust Board will be used for construction.
Got any questions, Eric?
So what happens if...
Do you have any questions, sir?
What happens if we don't go with this, uh, pay the 5% by the end of April? I mean, this, this whole thing just stops.
Did you hear that, Mario?
Don, did you wanna answer that? I'm sorry, I could hope on this question?
What I'm asking is, say we, we don't pay the 80,000 by the end of, of April, what happens then?
Well, that was a point prior with that, if we say we spend 60, 70,000, I spoke to the DOT, they're fine with even if we spend less, they just wanna see activity.
That we're moving on the project.
So what's the, what's the, what's the minimum that we could be spending? Because obviously, we're getting some hard times. So what can we do to 1% or 2%? They just want to see some action?
They didn't give a, a percentage. Uh, I'm sure, I'm thinking we, we could at least get 2.5%, $40,000 and I, and I'm sure they'll be fine. She didn't give me any kind of percentage, she just said they wanna see activity. If there's activity, then they should commit.
Let me ask you a question, Don. Uh, you said they, they just wanna see activity, correct? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Now, does that activity that they're, that they wanna see, does that have a time, a timeframe or is it, uh...
End of April.
End of April, right?
Yes, the, the April is part of the...
Okay, Laura, uh, let me ask, let me ask Laura then. Laura, uh, how do we look as a city for that?
We, we can swing, uh, we'll, we'll make every effort in that and you can see to finish out this project. Uh, my experience with the NMDOT is that they have granted extensions, uh, many a time and they, they try not to hinder these projects, they don't work with us.
So we could, we could very, very well, if we don't meet that April deadline, we can ask for extensions? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, typically.
Okay, that answered my question.
Anything else from the council? I'll entertain a motion. For the engineering First Street Stormwater Pump. Guys, this completes First Street, we need to do this.
I, I, I wanna make a motion that we, we do the stormwater for, uh, the First Street project, uh, depending on the percentage, you know, what we can afford, I don't know what it is, but, uh, uh, it's one thing that, you know, we need for this community because we get, we get a lot of, uh, flack for First Street being so awful, so we're, we're gonna be progressing forward, we're, uh, it's just gonna help out the community, we'll see, uh, what the percentage is, so I make a motion that we approve it.
For $222,573.38.
For $220,000, $270.38.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councilor Palio.
Yes.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor O'Dartay?
Yes.
That's something we've been working on for 20 years, right?
No shit. Whatever it is, let's just keep going.
It's been a long time that we, that project has been in the works.
Number 10. This one here is down behind Futures, guys. Trying to bring back the natural flood plain to Behind Futures and Behind the Mesa View to open the ditch up right there and bring it all back to the natural flood plain that it was when we were kids. Um, it'll turn it into basically a biopark. You'll have the birds and the fish and the frogs and the turtles and all that stuff. If you go down there and you walk that little triangle right now, we've got muskrats in there. It's just, it would be really cool to, to return it back to this. Donald, you were there when we did this. Talk to me.
Say what?
You were there when we talked about this over there, Behind Futures?
Yes.
And all we're asking for is approval to put in an application for a planning grant on this, guys.
Now, does that, does that, does that mean we have to get the state's approval in, in that particular area?
No.
Not at all? Because it's not...
No, we're, we're going through the federal game and fish, uh, what is it, Fish and Wildlife Services is who we're going through. The state doesn't own that land. Ronnie Pines owns that land.
Okay.
Ronnie Pines is gonna give us that land once we get through with this. Okay? That's part of the land exchange we're doing with him to get this project done.
Mayor, you're talking just that triangle right here, right behind Futures right here?
Yes, from the, the Futures Foundations to Mesa View to the ditch.
All right, the, the next slide is the...
There it is, right there.
...for economic development plan for the city by part.
Oh, that looks great.
For the, uh, uh, Mayor's committee, but the council, for those of you that may not be aware, um, the, the, the city was also awarded this year, we're notified, uh, cooperative funding in, in Washington Street for riverway drainage improvements, Washington Street, uh, although it's a riverway improvement, it really, most of their projects was just called for what they are, the flood control projects. Uh, we're putting in the underground storm drains.
That's all this is.
We're using the riverway to collect the water. Uh, we, we have a joint project with the public schools, East Mesa Elementary, so they also got funding, we've been working.
What happened?
That funding will also be made available this October and we'll start the, uh, the riverway drainage and we'll, uh, and we'll plan all the drainage...
1% to you?
The school, because that school's seen a place...
There's no rain.
Here in the next, I'd say, three years, um, they, they, they are, they are being funded for both schools. So part of that, we gotta carry the water from Washington down, so this, this, uh, what we're trying to... Is, is not...
Nothing, nothing more than flood control, right? What happened?
Bandwidth isn't holding up? Slow internet.
Or...
Mario, can you...
If you were, if you were, maybe you could share a little bit about some of the, the natural habitat, uh, over the years that, that you've described to us that, that was, uh, that, that this was home to?
Yeah, that's exactly what we wanna bring it back to, guys.
Right. My, my question is, is how is it gonna affect this, the, the community that's around it? I mean, is it, is it gonna approve?
Stop the flooding.
Stop the flooding. And then you said there's just rats and stuff over there.
Those muskrats, you're gonna have frogs, you're gonna have swans, you're gonna have those crane, cranes. All of that stuff will come back. When I was a kid, we used to get problems.
Can you hear me okay?
And get problems.
Yeah, I, you can hear me, I can hear you.
It was a great thing to do.
I, we can finish this from a conference call? Let me, let me get...
Wah!
Sorry.
Can you hear me now? What do we got left? We got 10?
11.
And 11.
Let me call them, hold on, all right?
Technology, you've got to love it.
We almost made it to the meat.
You know, guys, this one here, this is a no-brainer. It takes all the flood control that we've been doing. This is the last piece, man. And this one here is gonna be funded basically by everybody else. It's not gonna cost us a dime.
I don't think he's gonna, he's gonna add any more than, than what we know already.
That's it.
And, and I don't think...
So here we go, we're gonna entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 201668.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution, Resolution Number 20-1668, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial, financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Rio San Jose Grants a Royal Biopark Preliminary Engineering Report.
Mark, can you have a moment? I'll stay the second.
Mark, can you hear your phone, sorry?
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me out there yet?
Mark's right there, actually. They caught you on your phone.
My phone ain't here.
Oh, got you. Mark, can they call you on your phone?
Yes.
And then we'll talk to you that way.
My phone ain't here.
Now that they are, or what? I don't know, it's in the now. We're voting on it?
Yeah, we're already voting on this. The motion in the second is made.
Who made the second?
Eric.
Marco Polo.
I'm, I'm calling, I'm calling.
Yes, sir, Fred, Fred.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we can't hear you, guys.
We can hear you, Fred.
But we can't hear you.
He said, Fred says they can't hear us, that's him calling me.
They can't hear us, but...
No, they can't hear us.
Tell them we got a motion.
Or just put him on speaker.
Okay, Fred, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now, Fred?
Fred, can you hear us?
He hung up the phone. Can you hear me on the phone, Fred? You're my phone, Fred? Can you hear me?
Okay, I got you, guys.
Who do we got? This is the other one. Is everyone? Okay, guys, here's what we got. We got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 201668. We're now voting on it.
We're now voting on it.
Counselor Lucero, yes or no? After the vote, Laura. After the vote. We've already called for the vote. Rick? Yes or no?
Yes or no?
It's the one for the bio park behind Futures and Mesa View.
Yes, I... Yeah, yes.
Counselor Pavia? Eric?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
It's passed. Last one. Jefferson Avenue Drainage Project Storm Drain Change Order.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. This is Johnny Gentleman of Close and Company. So, about end of January, we discovered an unknown 10-inch sanitary sewer line within conflict with our storm drain for the Jefferson Ruined Drainage Project. At two locations. We have a pond up to north of the church that discharges west. We had a conflict there as well as at the intersection of Washington and Jefferson. You know, talking with everyone, no one knew about this line. The contractor hit it while they were excavating and there was quite a bit of wastewater flowing through there. So, you know, we started working with the contractor in the city to come up with a solution. We couldn't modify the storm drain because of all the flood drains in the area. We have a gravity sanitary sewer crossing with the gravity storm drain. Couldn't make any adjustments to make it work. So we proposed doing a... Basically, just putting a junction box, which what we're looking at on the screen now is a junction box. Actually, this is a... That place is the money. That one, this one, right? Better. Because it highlights the location of the sanitary sewer line. And so that rectangle where there's a gap in the red sanitary sewer line, the red line highlighted is the existing 10-inch. And our storm drain is the... In the sheeted structure. And there's a rectangle there where there's a gap in the red line. That's where the... That's the junction box. That represents the junction box that we're installing. And the way... Basically, because of the conflict, we're creating a sump in that junction box so water can flow underneath and around an encased sanitary sewer. And again, we coordinated with Mark and the City of Grants. And because of that sanitary sewer, the existing 10-inch was flowing so full, we... The whole team thought it was prudent to look at a larger pipe size. And so we came up with an 18-inch to handle, you know, future flows so we don't have to tear up these structures later on with a 30-inch casing. And so... And while we're working on the intersection here at Washington and Jefferson, while the road's torn up, we might as well replace that. All of the 10-inch line with 18-inch line. And so we got a quote from a contractor for this work for the two conflict locations and junction boxes. And the quote came in as 117,000... Oh, it's on X-line. excluding New Mexico gross receipts tax. So... So this line... Go back. This line, it gives you a little... Some details, a 6'5" junction box. 225 li of 10-inch recovery. It's actually 18-inch sanitary sewer line. And we've reviewed the change order in depth and we made a couple minor adjustments that didn't really impact the cost much. And so we're good with the cost. It's a good cost for the work that they're doing. And the SDP, David Bishop, is also okay with this change order and adding it to the construction costs. And it will be covered by the clean water funding that we have for the project. And we do have some agency funds to cover this amount. And... Go back. And our recommendation is to replace... Is to go forward with these improvements and replace the existing 10-inch with an 18-inch throughout the construction project to outside that pipe or underneath the intersection, basically, so we don't have to come back and carry it up later.
Questions?
And with that, are there any questions?
Counselor Pavia, questions?
Is it here, right, if you're going to replace the 120-foot pipe?
That's correct. And that's the length that's basically underneath the intersection. If you look at it, it's pretty... Just because of the geometry of how Washington's intersecting with Jefferson, that basically the red line, the length of that red line is what we're... Is about 225 feet.
Thank you, Donald.
Yes, sir.
We have covered 117 feet with a clean water removing plug, right?
Correct. We do have enough contingency contingency to cover this change order.
Rick?
Yeah, I'm... As long as it's covering that change order with that... Within that scope of funding, that I'm good with it.
Eric, you got any questions to him?
So what you're saying, the pipe to change it out, obviously, it's a great idea for... To get it done because there is funding for it. But the reason why we're changing it out because most of the flow of the sewer comes through that pipe from the northeast part of Grants. So obviously, it's a no-brainer to get it done even now that we have funding for it. So it's all good.
Fred?
Okay, my question is... Am I on? There, am I on now?
On the other way. There you go. The other way. Put the button up, right there.
Okay. Assuming that we approve this, what kind of timeframe are we looking to finish this job? For you, Mario?
Well, the current... The current schedule is... I know the thing, I can answer the 21 days worth of work that we do have to add for this land replacement. The government is going to have to bypass. They're going to have to set up temporary bypass of the 10-inch sanitary sewer to route the flows around when they remove the 10-inch. In the study, 18-inch, build the casing and build the structure and put the storm drain in. So it's adding 21 days. I have to apologize. I don't have a schedule setting. We do have that in our system.
It's in early July. It's in early July. The schedule's big to end now, but this would add the days that they're requesting for this change order. And so right now, it's scheduled to end in early July.
So it would be in August when it's over?
21 days. We're looking at September.
And that's assuming that you don't find any other difficulty or problems, and they're right.
Do what he does.
Is there anything that we can do? Can you answer? Do you have it?
Speaking to the phone, sir. He asked that if we don't have any other... Run into any other problems there, right? But we've already hit all the problems because we've already dug it up. So we know there ain't no more problems.
Well, I want to hear it from him.
If you're getting out there, they're wrapping up. Everything underground, this is the last piece.
Any other questions?
Okay, I think that address is...
Here's my...
And let me have one more thing. Let me have one more thing. As we know, we have a lot of groundwater and this area is no different. I just want to make the council aware that this pavement section is designed with a dual-grade system, a very hefty foundation. So it's designed to be able to dig that solid groundwater. So we really don't want any underground utility. These are either designed for 20 years and we don't want any underground utilities leaking out or failing. That's why we're recommending the 225 linear feet so they were completely out of the intersection.
Okay, here's my question. How's the sump going to work, guys?
So there's a sump box itself is where a house of standing water in that lower 12 inches of the box. But the box is oversized there because...
My concern is the solids, Mario. My concern is the solids hanging up in the sump. It's not the water. It's the solids hanging up in the sump, buddy. If it's going to be lower, the solids are going to fall out of it into the sump. That's my concern.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing we've done in the past that we could do here that, again, we've got solid groundwater and for all reason, we didn't share. And the only thing is to add a little gallery. It's really just to register that drainage through the box to be able to drain out itself. But the problem is when that groundwater... We see that groundwater, right, that ties to the elevation of the road, right? And so we don't want any groundwater infiltration on the sump. The design pointed out... Everything is on your property? Only to remember that Frank was married to put a small little station in. We would recommend that. It's not enough reason.
Okay. The solids are going to build up in that sump, man. I mean, there's got to be a way to push them through because if not, the sump's going to be a complete plug.
Or suck it out with vector. Ask him if that's a possibility.
Well, we... We will... We will... We will... To minimize the... And I'm all there with you.
Will the vector truck suck it out? Did you hear me, Mario?
Yes, sir.
Will the vector truck suck it out?
Yeah, the... We're going to do meetings regardless, but we can let that happen and see if we can minimize it.
All right.
And that's something, maybe, we could look into putting some kind of monitoring system to keep an eye on that thing.
Yeah, that's just going to drive the cost crazy. But the monitoring system is our employees going by there checking it.
Yeah, that's it.
Do you hear that, Mark?
Yes, sir.
That's our monitoring system. We're not going to spend no money to put in something that's going to give an alarm or something. Our alarm is our people. And our people are doing a great job. You would be amazed, the attitude, how it's changed around here, Fred, since you were here last.
Well, that's a good plus, sir.
Yes, it is.
That sump's not going to create any smell or anything, right?
Will they create a smell, Mario?
Hey, yeah, I... You ever heard of Patrick and Will? And I was just talking to Johnny when you guys were communicating with him on music. We're going to minimize that sump. So whoever has a gun in there and you have a gun here, just give us a couple of things. We'll connect with the... Could be able to try to minimize it. But there is going to be some maintenance. We don't want the rain to create smell.
Yeah, that's the key because we just fixed a wastewater treatment plant that was putting a smell all over this town and I don't want to start again. Okay?
No, sir. No, we're not going to go down that road.
On that note, I'll entertain a motion for 117,871.44 to complete that Jefferson sewer project.
I'll make a motion to get the funding for the Jefferson Avenue Drainage Project Stormwater Change Order.
Second.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Counselor Pavia? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Ocarte?
Yes.
That's the last item. Council, comments from the council. Let's start with Laura. Laura, have you got any comments tonight?
So I wanted to note the bio park that was titled "The Bio Park on Your Agenda." That is actually a flood project.
That it is.
And so it's part of our master flood plan. And I saw some comments on the Facebook that people are saying we should be doing, you know, focusing on other priorities. But that's part of a flood project that is very important, especially to people that live in those neighborhoods and have had their homes flooded almost yearly. So I wanted the public to be aware of that. And then I wanted to welcome our new council councillors. And we're very happy to have you and we're very excited to be working with you. Welcome.
Thank you, Laura. Fred, you got any comments? Fred Pavia?
We're talking about... From the ladies, Eric and Fred. Welcome aboard, guys.
Rick, thank you.
Yeah, same thing. Eric and Fred, welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you guys and doing good things for our community.
Comment, Eric?
I just want to thank everybody. This is going to be interesting. It's something that I really wanted for a few years. You know, people know I ran for county commissioner twice. And now coming over here into the city, you know, there's a lot of good people here that work for the city. There's good people here in our community, the people who run the community, outstanding people, and I'm glad to be a part of it. So we may not have all the answers, but hopefully, we can get to a common path where we can make our city, let's just say, the best damn little city in New Mexico.
Thank you, Mike. Fred?
I just want to say thank you to the constituents in District 3 for giving me a term here in Grand City Council for the third time. I appreciate that. I consider it a privilege and a blessing to be on the city council. I look forward to working with the mayor and the council and the city manager and the city clerk and Mark and all the people from the city. I always consider it an honor and a privilege